You know, your throw down, give Janice your throw down so she can get them coming in. We're all in trouble. Maybe she's taken. Yeah, well, that's true. That's true. All right. Whenever you're ready, Lauren, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the city of Bettendorf. This is our committee of the whole meeting, today is Monday, May 2nd, 2022, it's 5 o'clock, thank you all for being here. We have a slew of consent agenda items that we'll take up with our community development director, Mark Hunt, and we'll start with item M. Mr. Hunt, thanks for joining us this evening, appreciate your work.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council have quite a few cases to go through, I've tried to put these into slides so you don't have to go through every document that you already have at your desk, I put the most salient points in the slides. 22-011, Lot 1, J J Z, second addition, this is a site development plan that also includes in your consent packet a final plat that combines three lots together. You're gonna notice as we go through our presentations tonight, there's a lot of, lot happening in our industrial area off Centennial Court. So, these three lots, like I said, will be combined, that plat is provided to you elsewhere in your packet. It's a general industrial future land use, zoning is I-2, it's an office warehouse building. The applicant is Focus Development, associated with Kevin Kellner, and these are all permitted uses.
Who is this Kellner character?
Hard to see the site development plan here, I just want to point out a few things. There will be stormwater detention, well, there already is existing stormwater detention and routing to this side of the property, I'm gonna call that the south side. Access off the cul-de-sac only. A 9,000 square foot building and a 10,000 square foot building, plenty of parking, they're actually overparked. And they have a tree factor that they'll meet easily, we just have to be careful where we place those trees for the sake of easements, utility access and things like that. They do have a covered or fenced dumpster, and they do not have sidewalks as we don't require them in our industrial areas. Here's an elevation, this would be the larger building of the two, so this elevation, these buildings are gonna be very similar, this elevation would be of this building here. Again, two buildings on the property, one 9,000, one 10,000, one 9,900. The building you see here also has the back end pad and ramp for the larger semi trucks. This had a positive staff recommendation at P and Z, and P and Z did approve it unanimously. There will be no parking on Central, Centennial Court, that's normal. Normal stormwater water quality requirements will be in place, no trees in the easements, I mentioned that, and this whole subdivision is covered by Lomas, we'll just have to update those as we go forward with the permitting of the buildings. I would be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions on this one, consent item M? Seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to keep item M on our consent for tomorrow night.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's move to N, as in Nancy, please.
And on my scorecard, that's case 22-016, I'm at the awkward point in life where I have to have my glasses off to read this screen, but I don't have my glasses, I can't see you without them, so I can't necessarily read your facial expressions, so if you have a question, you may have to speak up.
Everybody's happy, Mark.
In my mind, they're always happy, sir. 2140 53rd Avenue, site development plan. We're gonna step away from Centennial Court for just a minute, this is an interesting case, it's really just a change of use, really not much of an envelope change as far as the building goes, but do want to draw your attention to it, the applicant is Genesis Bettendorf Health Plex, it's Lot 1 of Genesis at Crow Valley, fifth addition. It's a slight development plan review, but most of the development really is changing on the inside, a change of use that would require your review. So, the interior of this building on the first floor in the central part, roughly, roughly here, will become an emergency room. About 6,190 square feet. And it will have an ambulance canopy that comes off the, what I'm gonna call the rear side here. I'll note that this, this property is in Bettendorf, obviously, but it does back up to Bettendorf, or back up to Davenport. It's a C2 in our district, the neighboring Davenport property is Commercial Office Park. Site plan shows you some of the movements for the ambulances, they come in, basically, they can access off Falcon Drive at two locations, and then transit the edges of the property either north or south to get to the ambulance bay. I would note that Falcon Avenue, then 53rd Avenue is signalized currently and is compatible with the traffic signal preemption for emergency vehicles, so we can make sure those vehicles get the, the right access when they need it. Small change to the envelope is this ambulance canopy, again, more about the use than the actual external change, but this would be built to that west side. And a little more information than probably we'd normally bring to you, but here's the interior spacing. Just in general, you can see that central part becomes emergency room, actually, you need less parking for a hospital than you do for medical offices, because often you're getting a ride from somebody else when you're going to the hospital, you're not driving yourself, typically in ambulance, so you don't need as much parking, so the parking count actually goes down, so no initial parking is required. No special use, nothing like that, this is a permitted use. We did have a positive staff recommendation, and we did have a unanimous vote for it at P and Z. We're gonna work with the petitioner to add some additional screening on the west boundary, they've sent us a proposal, we're reviewing it right now with staff, but I think we'll be able to come to a a good solution using Evergreens or something similar. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Questions for Mark? Yes, Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor, they, they show that they're gonna add parking though anyhow, even though you indicate they don't require it, it looks like they're gonna add parking?
Yeah, they were previously permitted for a parking lot expansion.
And so they're now actually gonna do that?
They are, yeah, I think that may have already been done, there may be somebody here that can answer that question.
Thank you.
Other questions on N? All right, seeing none, let's entertain a motion to approve the same for our consideration tomorrow night on consent. All those in favor? Any opposed? We'll take it up on consent tomorrow night. All right, moving to consent O.
Thank you, Mayor, case 2217, Lot 10, J J Z, J J Z, second addition, we're back down in Centennial Court. This is 35,121 square foot lot, it's one of our narrower lots down there, again, general industrial, it's in an I-2 district. This is going to be a three unit office contractor condo, these have become quite popular over the past few years. Basically, small office and storage space and some lay down yard area for contractors, small builders, other types of businesses. Site development plan, here we have the stormwater to the, what I'll call the north side. Do all our landscaping in front, again, having to keep things out of, out of the easements, it's hard to do in these narrow lots. Not a ton of parking required, and they do have some indoor parking, so you don't see a ton of spaces, but because they do have available indoor parking, they meet the parking counts. Your typical pole barn type building, nothing really exquisite here. It was passed positively, or it was a positive staff recommendation, recommendation unanimously passed by P and Z. Again, no park on Centennial Court, we'll work them on their water quality, and we'll try and keep the trees out of easements. No sidewalks, again, industrial area.
Questions on O? No questions, let's entertain a motion this remain on tomorrow night's agenda, please. All those in favor? Any opposed, we'll take it up tomorrow. Onto item P.
Case 22-019, 3262, Centennial Court, you're gonna see lots of similar factors with this property, this is at the end of the cul-de-sac now, so we've moved up to the north a little bit. Again, still in J J Z addition, we have fits, fences and deck, as the petitioner, they want to build an 8,160 square foot, one story light industrial building, where they'll have some showroom and some storage space. Again, industrial zoning, nothing surprising there, site plan, we utilize, because of the location of this lot, we use a storm water system both on the north and south of the property. Access of course off of Centennial Court, no sidewalks to speak of. Parking again is plentiful, they do have access to interior parking as well. And really not, not a lot to go through on this one, it's very similar to the others, here's your elevations, pole building with some office space.
Showroom with 10 spaces meets our ordinance, I see.
Yeah.
How many, where are the people gonna?
The interior space for parking as well.
Okay.
Yep.
I assume the same considerations on no parking on the court will be?
Yes, sir.
On this one?
Yep, no parking on Centennial Court, water quality, of course, will be required, and landscaping to be, you know, met per our landscaping handbook.
Okay. Questions on consent P? Yes, Bill?
These water quality designs, are they all similar, using the same methods for all these developments, Brian?
Yeah, what they, a lot of them, what they entail is just like a swale that will actually detain the water for a period of time, they actually have like infiltration basins or whatnot with native plantings to actually filter out whatever would immediately run off a parking lot in the event of a heavy rain. The detention is farther to the south, but what we are requiring them to have a water quality volume that meets our new current stormwater practices.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor, and just to verify, these all are above the flood plain, right, they're out of the, out of, out of the flood, the FEMA flood maps?
Yeah, so when the, when the subdivision was put in, they raised it, they took those lots out of the flood plain at that time with Lomas. If they replat, then they have to basically update their Loma, this is not a replat, so there's really no updated Loma necessary? Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I'd like to entertain a motion that consent P remain on tomorrow night's agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor? Any opposed? We'll take it up tomorrow night, let's move to consent Q.
So if you're keeping score, I think that's about 35,000 square feet of industrial building in our small lot industrial park on Centennial Court.
Awesome.
One fell swoop.
Yeah.
Some people have done some good work on that.
Why have you delayed them, why don't you just let them come through?
I'm talking as fast as I can, I was told I had the time.
Of course, it's nice to have the interest and the folks willing to spend some money.
Case 22-020, we're gonna go up to Tanglefoot here, Lot 1, Tanglefoot Crossing, second addition, site development plan. This is 2.3 acres, this corner you're probably familiar with, Devil's Mountain Road in Tanglefoot, it's, the petitioner is Dolan, Dolan, Kevin Dolan. This will be a commercial structure, it's zone C2, which is good, restaurant and retail uses are permitted and proposed here. Commercial strip, it's mainly one story, but there will be the corner that will have two stories, we'll give you some elevations in a minute. 89 parking spaces are required, 95 are provided. The patios and drive-throughs, I'll point out to you here, so a patio on each side of the building and one drive-through, these are actually doors, not drive-through windows, those are access doors, and one drive-through with stacking that meets our code. Commercial strips 10 years ago would not have been built this way, they would not have included a patio on each side and a drive-through, this is kind of a new way of doing business, probably post-COVID, and I would expect to be with us for some time. The elevations here come out a little dark, but you can see that corner is two stories, they're using kind of a a brick and wood finish matching somewhat between what you see at the tangled wood and what you see at Crawford. So the finistration kind of blends in really well, which we did ask them to, to make those, make those changes for us, and they were able to do that. Showing four users on the inside, restaurant on each corner, retail and drive-through separate from the restaurant, so this is a fourth separate user, the drive-through is not part of a restaurant, it's its own self-contained business. Had a positive staff recommendation, I wanna go back and show you something real quick, though, had a positive staff recommendation, before I get to that, I want to point out that we did head in with the help of the developer, some connections to our trail system and our sidewalk system. So to avoid people kind of creating cow paths or what have you, we have those, those two connections built in. And then no curb cut on Devil's Mountain Road, I think that's important to mention. So a positive staff recommendation was approved unanimously by P and Z. There are some minor changes to the plat that we're gonna have them make before we finally finish this up, and then we're gonna work with them on the tree factors just to avoid planting in the utility areas, we'll probably work with them on the caliper of the trees and, and locate them elsewhere on the property. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions on Q? Bill?
Mark, could we go back to the site plan, please? Careful to me that the parking on the south side, people trying to back out will be impeded by the cars stacking in the in the drive-through. Did we give them full credit for those parking spaces?
We did, again, they're overparked anyway, but that 24 foot width, we did question that, talked with our engineer, that would be allowable, even if that were a regular parking lane, and this will be reserved for employee parking and talking with the petitioner.
Okay, thank you.
Other? Yep, Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor, did anybody consider, back to parking, those four spaces on the left side, left-hand side of the picture there, which would be, I guess, those four plus spaces, did they consider eliminating those, instead putting in some landscaping? Particularly since you're already having a problem with placing the trees, put some landscaping in those four parking spots, since they're overparked. And I'm looking at that as the people are driving around the corner, those cars backing out are gonna have a problem anyhow.
Yeah, I mean, that would be up to the developer, if he wanted to propose that change, we did not propose it as staff. We think this corner's gonna be busy and we like it to be overparked, honestly, so I'm, I want a little more cushion on the parking side. With the tree calipers, you know, we can get to the tree factors we need just by increasing the caliper, so we think that's a better solution.
Way outs? Scott Webster?
I assume it's, is this used in regional retention?
Yes.
Okay. And then the, Bill mentioned the question on the back and up of the other ones, if they angled the parking spots, it would help.
That could help, yep.
It's a lot easier to pull out when they're angled, you're halfway back, they're ready? I don't know if there's, I'm not in your world of planning, if there's any.
You might lose one on each one.
You'll lose, you'll lose a little bit, but they still.
Probably lose three or four. Other questions? All right, like to entertain a motion this remain on tomorrow night's consent agenda. All those in favor? Any opposed? We'll take up Q tomorrow night, let's move to item T, please.
Case 22-021, we bring to you, this is a little bit different, this is an RFP for your consideration, an RFP to update our comprehensive plan for the city of Bettendorf. You remember that just a few years back, we had a well-done comprehensive plan, was adopted in 2017, the work for it probably occurred a year or two before that. Bettendorf's been a high-growth city, I think our presentation tonight probably proves my point more than any other slides I can present here. But we had 17.7% growth, just under 40,000 people, as the mayor will point out. I received some changing patterns of development, and while our comprehensive plan was done very well, no comprehensive plan could have considered the changes we saw with pandemic and the way housing has changed and the way commercial development especially has, has changed. We've also completed a lot of projects, and I think a lot of you have worked very hard on those, and those have changed our city. I will point out that the bottom graphic is from our comprehensive plan, it shows three growth rates for our city. A historical growth rate or a low growth rate in blue, in purple, there's a moderate mid, mid-rate, and green is the high-growth rate. We are following the high-growth rate trend, maybe surpassing it.
1.8, we're surpassing it.
And we're, since we're following that, the faster you grow, the more you need to plan and update your plan, because you push past your plan horizons. I think that this slide is just a good representative example of what's happening in the housing market. When you look at ratio of townhomes and apartments to single-family homes, just on this slide, you know, these all came through roughly in a similar amount of time. Maybe 10 years ago, this would have been the exact opposite of this, it would have been mostly single-family homes, but this is what the market is demanding right now. Also, the market's demanding a lot more senior housing, and Bettendorf has become a, a growth area for that, I think we have 460 some units shown on this page that are either online or will be coming online shortly. So those residents will be demanding services and maybe needing different amenities that we have or, or don't have in Bettendorf, I think it'd be interesting for the comp plan to comprehend that. We'd like to issue this RFP with the nation, with the intent of a nationwide search to find a consultant and do a robust plan update. So we're not getting rid of the plan we have, we're gonna update it, I think it's done well, but I think it's time to do those updates. It'll include public input, data update with the new census data, and annexation review, coordination with our other plans throughout the city and in the region, we're gonna look at DCAs, we're also gonna do a special sub-area study of IED and Middle Road, and that's just a few things, I have a lot more that will be done in the update of this plan. We'd appreciate your support for issuing that, I know it'll come to you tomorrow, but I wanted to give you a little background.
Questions for Mark? Yeah, Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor, on page three of the RFP, on item 10, we left out a Sentra. We mentioned the bank, we mentioned the lofts, we mentioned the self-supporting improvement, but we left out a Sentra as a significant change.
Counsel, I apologize for that, I, I once had a boss who told me, be careful what list you make.
Yeah, exactly.
Cause you're gonna leave somebody out.
You have proved, he's now passed away, but he was lieutenant commander that was my boss, was on the coast guard, and he said, be careful what list you make, cause it'll always be wrong, so I, I apologize for that error, and I will correct it.
Thank you.
Other questions or thoughts? All right, seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion that item T remain on consent.
So moved.
All those in favor? Any opposed? We'll take it up tomorrow night, let's move to item U, please.
This is 1030 Parkway Drive, this is a reappraisal from our FEMA buyout program, I want to give you a little background and just some update on what's going on here, I only have one more slide, guys, maybe two. 2019, we received grant funds to purchase up to 22 homes in a FEMA buyout along the Duck Creek Bike Path or Duck Creek Parkway. We've purchased 12, I came to you and talked to you probably individually a month ago about, we have about 10 holdouts, and for those 10 holdouts, their appraisals are getting old and they were wanting to get new appraisals. I think we probably want to get at least four of those houses, maybe six, bought to really build a contiguous area. I don't suggest that we would do a reappraisal to all of them, because I think some of them are, as we're learning, are kind of outside the area we really want to focus on, but this house would be in particular, be right in the heart of the area we want to go for. Again, this is a five-year-old appraisal, it was done at 105,000, the alternative appraisal provided by the homeowner at their own expense from a licensed appraiser, that the city has used before, in fact, $145,000. I would note that this is no increase to our overall obligation, we're just rearranging the money that we already have been granted, and our local match does not change. And we actually may spend less money than we thought we were gonna spend if we kind of ignore some of these other houses that were outside of our highly valuable area, our high target area. So my last point there is that this home falls right dead center where we want to be buying houses to build this perhaps contiguous area. We would need your approval to purchase this home at the new appraised cost, and I would have to send that to FEMA, they'd have to review it before we're able to actually buy it. The homeowner's done all their due diligence, they've reviewed our offer, they declined the 105,000 offer, they're willing to accept the 145,000 offer. Doesn't increase our total cost, doesn't increase our local match, it is an either or or none situation, so they, we either buy at 105, we buy at 145, we do none of the above, we don't get to bargain, I can't do 125, you know, I can't, it's not like a normal arms-like transaction, FEMA has these very, very prohibitive rules around this program, so it's either the 105, they take it at that, the 145, if you want to do that, or none. But I can't, I can't bargain.
The question then is the 145?
Yeah, the 145, but again, if we are taking some of these houses off the table because they're kind of outside our area, our overall costs are not going up.
Yeah, that's what it's, to me, if they're kind of out and don't care, we go for the 145, then we have the rest.
Mark, do you have the map?
I can bring a map.
Show that.
Apparently, the rules don't allow for us to update our appraisal? Even though it's five years old?
No, sir, so we, we provide what's called the fair market appraisal that, that first came out, and they have to live with that or go get one on their own. But we don't get to do like a, a mid-cycle update on appraisals, I looked into that, that possibility was not one. Mark, are we in a position that we have to spend the money? Whatever we don't spend will be, I assume, retained by the feds and either re-appropriated or?
So let's say eight of the people that even are outside of our target zone all come back and say, hey, we're only gonna take a higher offer, then we gotta send the money back, or do we have the availability to spend money elsewhere?
Yeah, so it's, it's a reimbursement grant, so we're technically not sending any funds back, we're just not spending what we're authorized to, so that money would probably get reassigned to some other program. I think Mr. Plane asked to see this on a map, here's 1030 Parkway Drive. We have a program in place or a plan in place to essentially take everything that we can along Parkway Drive here from roughly, I'm gonna say this corner, I think that's Heather, from Heather Lane, and then also square off this block. So that way, in your mind's eye, you can kind of imagine we have this, this one-sided park buffer that runs along the street, we'd basically double that for a length of, you know, roughly a half mile, maybe a quarter mile, and then build a, maybe a park space in the middle here. I will, I will note that we also have another application in place right now, and we're hopeful to hear back on that one soon, so we will be able to, you know, square off this property.
So if we get these other six, then what's our status, for our houses?
If, well, the other six have, right now, only one homeowner's come back to me and even taken the time to reapply for a, a new appraisal, and I've notified them that they have the the ability to do so, explain the program to them, only one has taken me up on that offer. So one of those six that I would still like to have of the 10 holdouts, one of six has come back and said, yeah, I want to do this. So much of this is about timing, I'm learning, when I, when I work with these people, it's, a lot of them love the program, they've experienced the floods, they know it's a tough situation to get through, but you have to be in the right time of your life to move and where you're at with your family, so much of it is timing. That even if they wanted, want to do it, if they, if they're not ready for it in their personal life, it's just how it is. Yes, sir.
How many of those in that target area do we own now?
We own?
In particular, in that area where this one is?
Yep, so we own, we bought 10 the first round, and then we bought 12 under this round, so we have 22 houses that we've, we've purchased, and I'm gonna say 80% of them are in between Heather and, let's call it Heather, Crestview and Parkway. We have a few that were up on Holly, and I wouldn't advise that we go up that, you can even see one on the map here, I wouldn't advise we go that far north anymore. I would, I would recommend that, and we will, if we get another grant, we'll stay between Heather and Crestview and Parkway, kind of square it off.
I'd be interested in two issues, number one, what's the assessed value of the property? Number two, were the comps that were used in the appraisal, did they come from this general area?
Yeah, I think they did, yeah. You'd have to look, but I'm pretty sure they did, they used, they used comps from that area, of course, I think the point you're making is we may be, we may be bargaining against ourselves.
Everybody, everybody knows what real estate's doing, it's going up, so this is, how many years old this appraisal?
Appraisals, I'm gonna say 2017, give me a six months, you decide.
I'm not, I'm not surprised it went up, everybody's just going up, so.
Yeah, and if you're trying to find replacement housing?
It's more, yeah.
I find it interesting that when we first started this program, you know, the program was sold to us that, gee, the sky is falling, that these homeowners can't afford insurance, they're just in dire financial straits, and some of them were even gonna walk away from their house because they couldn't sell it, now it appears as though the fact that they're holdouts, that the sky isn't falling, that we don't have this big crisis that we initially had.
Yeah, you're right, so there was, there was a change in the marketplace that allowed more private insurance participation in the flood market, that competition brought those rates down. That did not change the fact that these homes are flood-prone. And, and when I talk to people, there are people who, I would love to get out of this house before the next flood, cause I don't want to go through that. So while there is that side of it, the, the actual market aspect side of it, the flood-prone condition of these homes still remains, and it's still a, you know, target for FEMA to try and address. And like I say, while we described them maybe as holdouts, it's also, like I said, a lot about timing, and I think some of these people will come around in future grant rounds. The other opportunity is, is do we want to be? The other opportunity is, is do we want to be able to square off a usable chunk of property that we can then create in some type of open space to? And maybe that goal now is, is, is a little bit where we're headed as opposed to the immediate relief that, when the program first started, that we were trying to provide.
But while they may be flood-prone, they haven't flooded for what, 35, 40 years?
That's a true statement.
It doesn't make any difference to FEMA.
It's not 35 or 40 years, I'm only 42, I think flooded in what?
1990.
90 was a big one, yeah.
Twice, twice in 90.
So it's 32 years.
Yeah, but, but having been into most of these properties, I won't say all of them, while we experience the flood as, you know, with this thing that happens in the news, they do get water in these properties a lot more often than we think of as a flood because of where the water table is, because of the way the foundations were built. So they're almost all wet inside.
But it doesn't make any difference, Jerry, whether or not you've had a flood. If you're in the zone, if you're in the flood zone, you're part of the program.
And the flood insurance problem's going to come back. The only reason why it went away is because they were going to end up taking, all the banks decided that they were going to start taking private insurance because otherwise they were going to get all their houses back in foreclosure. So the way for them to not get them back in foreclosure was to take private insurance for a while. Soon as they start getting that foreclosure number down, they'll drop it back and they'll say, you got to have FEMA insurance and all the rates will go back up.
They're still going up, but they're...
Yeah.
Wasn't quite...
It'll be back in a period of time.
Decker got the assessment.
The current assessed value in 22 is 109,000.
So tell me this, if we take option three, we're not going to pay you the 145, can they reapply if we do another batch? Because there's other houses we have to get as well.
So I was not able to take homes and put them in both programs. So I tried to do that and FEMA kicked it back at me and said, listen, you got them in this program, you still got money in the 2019 program, buy it under that. They don't get to live in both.
Okay.
So I think, sir, to answer your question, they would not be able to kind of bet on the come of getting in the next program.
So it's, if we want the house, we got to grab the house.
That's correct.
And if they're not going to take 105, we can't negotiate at 130, you got to pay them the 145.
That's correct, sir.